Okay, so let's start again. We're now going to start the Nonpartisan Board of Education Virtual Forum. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening. I do want to thank the Women's Democratic League here in Frederick County, as well as the Central Committee, United Democrats of Frederick County, Young Democrats of Frederick County, and the North and South Frederick Democratic Meetup Groups for co-hosting this event. We truly appreciate that. I'm just going to give you a quick rundown. The candidates already know this. We have seven candidates here tonight, as well as Gary Brennan, who's going to serve as the moderator. My name is Mary Lee. I'm the president of the Women's Democratic League, myself, and Samantha Van Rens, who is also one of the Women's Democratic League, and Richard Kapowitz, that we call Cap. We are serving as co-hosts behind the scenes, making sure that everything runs correctly and well. And we can't guarantee that it will run correctly, but we want it to. So we're going to do our best. Everyone's videos will be turned off, except for the candidates, and the interpreters, and Darren. And so if you have any questions, the chat is on, but it is set to message just the host. And so we will respond as soon as we can. Candidates are going to give one-minute opening. We're going to have five minimum questions. Each candidate will be given one minute to answer the question. Sam, if you could turn Laura's video on, I'd appreciate it. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. At the end of the question, we will allow a candidate to do a rebuttal if they so choose. If they do, they will have a 30-second rebuttal. Candidates will be given three 30-second rebuttals. Once they've used all three, they will no longer be able to do a rebuttal. Depending on time, we may go to a sixth and seventh question, but there's going to be a minimum of five. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Gary so we can jump right into the questions. So Gary, the floor is yours. And my video is going to go off, but throughout the evening, I will be coming on and off. But for now, I'm going to go off. And Gary, the floor is yours. And don't forget that Gary will be doing the one-minute introductions of the candidate in just a moment.
Thank you, Mary Lee. And thanks to the Democratic Clubs for organizing this event for an extremely important position in Frederick County. As Mary Lee said, we're kind of traveling uncharted waters in this virtual forum. So I ask everyone watching and participating to be patient with me and with each other, and hopefully we'll learn a lot about you guys tonight. We're going to start with a one-minute introduction by each of the seven Board of Education candidates. We're going to do this round in alphabetical order. So the first person to go will be Andrea Artman.
Go ahead, Andrea.
As Picasso said, "There's only one way to look at things until someone shows us how to look at them with different eyes." Hi, I'm Andrea Artman, and my goal is to bring a new perspective to the Board of Education. It is an absolute pleasure to be with you today. Although I was educated in the public school system from kindergarten through my master's degree in engineering, and I'm a PTA mom of two, this is where my formal experience with the public education system in America ends. However, this is also why I'm an ideal candidate for the Board of Education. My background in the implementation of policy, guidance, and law, my career spent reducing the complexity of processes, and my passion for equal opportunities for all students makes me neatly positioned to bring a new perspective to the Board of Education in Frederick County.
Thank you, Ms. Artman. Next, we'll hear from David Bass.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank the Women's Democratic League for hosting the forum, and for each of you for being here. My name is David Bass, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. In my career, I've worked as a special education teacher, a habilitation specialist for people with developmental disabilities, and as a higher education administrator. And with your support, I look to bring these experiences to the Board. By working collaboratively, we can build on the work the Board is doing to improve our special education services, ensure that our students' mental health needs are being met, and work towards racial equity. I want to connect with every member of our community through online or in-person meetings throughout our county to hear more directly from you and learn your concerns and your aspirations for FCPS. By working together, we can create the best school system in the state of Maryland.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray Gallagher.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ray Gallagher. I'm currently serving on the Board of Education. I want to also thank our hosts for making this opportunity available tonight. And I also want to take a moment to just thank our educators who have spent countless hours in the past two months truly transforming and innovating what education looks like to ensure that even while school buildings are closed, our students can remain connected. I'm a parent of two school-aged children, an advocate for our public education system, and bring experience with schools and districts in my nonprofit experience. And as a board member, I'm really working to ensure that all students can access resources and programs in an equitable environment. And I believe every educator should have access to the resources they need to be successful in and outside the classroom. I also believe it's critically important to work in deep collaboration with our fellow board members, schools, students, parents, and community members. And I look forward to discussing these issues more tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Lois Jarman.
Good evening. I wanted to first thank Mary Lee and...
Our first glitch. Ms. Jarman froze.
Very important vote. Just a little bit about myself. I am a Maryland girl through and through. I was born in Baltimore City, was raised in Carroll and Baltimore Counties, but I chose Frederick County to live in and to raise my family. Of the 59 years that I have been on this planet, I have spent 54 of them in the state of Maryland. I was an undergrad at Goucher, and I wanted to be an attorney. And I studied languages, but I said I was never, ever, ever going to teach. And I learned from that that you never say never. I was a stay-at-home mom, and I worked with my kids, teaching them. I logged 1,000 volunteer hours with FCPS. And then my son told me I could no longer volunteer, so I had to work for the Board of Ed. And so I hope to keep doing that in my position as Board of Ed member. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Next up is Jason Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Democratic League for having this event tonight. We appreciate it. Also, I want to thank our first responders, who are working on the front lines over this COVID crisis. Also, I want to say congratulations to Class 2020. Well done. You do well in the future. My name is Jason J. Johnson. My experience is going to work for you. I have over 15 years of experience in the classroom and in leadership positions. I've led at the state level for Charles Hopkins University MBA program. I'm also a current teacher. I teach computer science here in Maryland. I also am a coach, FCPS parent, both a graduate and current student, and a community volunteer. It's my desire to bring my experience to work Frederick County. I want to put us in position to have all the materials and resources we need to be leaders, not only in the state, but in the nation.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Sue Johnson.
Hi, good evening, everybody. And I also want to extend my gratitude to the Women's Democratic League and the other devoted members to put this debate together tonight. My name is Sue Johnson. And unlike my friend Lois Jarman, I have not spent my entire life in Maryland. I've lived around quite a few places, but have been in Maryland since 1996 in Frederick County. And for 23 years, I've been teaching at Frederick Community College, and I've got thousands of former students at this point. And just kind of coincidental timing in the unprecedented time you find yourselves in, I happen to have a very deep background in distance learning, which I never really emphasized before. And then also am an EMT and first responder, so I see firsthand what's going on with the COVID-19 cases in our area. And I do think that, at this point in time, I have some skills that would be very valuable to the Board of Education. And I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. And the last of our candidates alphabetically is Dean Rose. You'll go first in the final conference. Mr. Rose.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dean Rose. I'm a 22-year resident of Frederick County. I own and operate a State Farm Insurance and Financial Services Agency in Middletown. My wife, Robyn, is vice president of development at Frederick Health. And we have a son and a daughter who attended Frederick County Public Schools K through 12. Currently, I'm the board chair for the Boys and Girls Club of Frederick County, serve on the Special Gifts Committee at Frederick Health, sit on the Steering Committee for the Church of Frederick, and belong to the Rotary Club of Carroll Creek. In addition, I coached varsity high school basketball in the county for 13 years. I've dealt with budgets, large and small, and I've had to make difficult business and personnel decisions. And in addition to my nonprofit and business experience, I've been an advocate and lobbied for young people on Capitol Hill and in Annapolis. It's these experiences and my passion for helping young people that I think will make me an asset for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to get into the questions. Just as a reminder, I'll tell you guys the questions. Each of you will have one minute to respond. The order is arbitrary. I did it by chance earlier today, but no one will go first more than once. But other than that, you'll go in the order that fate decreed. When we're done with everybody having a chance to speak, you can rebut or add to your comments for 30 seconds. If you wish to do that, raise your hand so I can see you want to speak again. But you only can do that three times. Once you've done it three times, you can no longer rebut. And again, there are at least five questions, and depending upon time, up to seven. So the first question we have is kind of a big-picture question about the role that you're seeking. What is the appropriate role of a Board of Education member in the running of our school system? And what skills do you bring to this office? And the first person to answer that question is Mr. Bass.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think the appropriate role is certainly listening and being an advocate. I really think that in all aspects of my career, in higher ed, in working with people and families with disabilities, and as a teacher, I developed great listening skills. And so certainly, listening to community members and advocating are an important part of this. I think budgeting and being able to advocate for a stronger budget for FCPS. I really look forward to advocating among elected officials and with our community members for a stronger budget for FCPS, even in challenging economic times like we are likely to face in these next few years.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you. So I think the role of Board of Ed members is definitely to listen to the needs of our community and to really hear the voices of those that are most affected by our decisions. And so that includes our educators, our support staff, our students, our parents, and really being able to consider all sides of what the situation or decision might be. Of course, supervising and evaluating the superintendent and her or his role within the system, as well as setting the strategic vision and budget for the school system as a whole. And I think David mentioned the key word of collaboration. It's really critical that Board of Ed members are collaborative, not just with fellow board members, but with the community as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, it is your turn.
Okay, thank you. I'll just echo the sentiments of the other candidates in that, my view of the role of the Board of Education is to be the fiduciary of the public tax dollars that are used to fund our educational system. Our responsibilities are to ensure that the superintendent is being held accountable for the work that they do, and also to be representatives of the public, which again, also requires us to be good listeners and have a good pulse of what is important to members of our entire community. Also, I think the most important advocates or the most important constituents we serve are our students, and that it's incumbent upon us to make decisions that will chart a course for a good, long-term direction for all the students in Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Artman.
I think the role of the Board of Education is to implement policy and enhance the educational experience of students and staff while implementing that policy. I also think it's to speak for those who are not often heard and who don't often have a chance to voice their concerns and their issues in areas where you actually have to be present. So with the Board of Education, you have to be there a lot of times to be able to give your opinion. And I think that's kind of our role is to make sure that we're listening to those in the community and bring that to the Board so they don't necessarily have to come in on those days if they cannot. For me, I bring small business experience. I bring leadership Frederick County experience. And I think the coming together of both the industry and stakeholders is very important in making sure that all of our...
Okay.
...are met. Thank you.
All right. That's right. I usually let people finish their sentence, but we'll just try to keep, when you see that red, try to finish.
It's hard to see so many faces at one time.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. You asked about the role and the skills for the Board. So the role, I believe, is going to be to be an advocate and a listening ear for the community, having the community's best interest in mind. Also, need to be team players. The Board is not a one-person job. It's a team, you've got to get along with others, work well with others. Also, to have vision. On the Board, they very well do things that they won't ever see come to full pass in their term. They have a vision for the future and make decisions that benefit Frederick County going forward. Skills I bring to the position are my roles as executive director at Mesa at Charles Hopkins University. There, I ran budgets. I advocated at the state level. I had testified for Congress, state, sorry, state senate, rather, for the needs of the program. And also, as an educator, get to be able to do crisis management. And you get to be able to think on the moment when things come up and have ideas. I'm also an innovator. So those are the skills I bring to the position. I'll be able to innovate, very enthusiastic, and I'm a team player.
All right, that's time. Thank you. Mr. Rose.
I believe the role of the school board is to be the eyes, the ears, and the voice of our system and our community. I had the opportunity, before the lockdown, to visit dozens of our facilities here in Frederick County, from elementary schools to high schools to our teacher development center, to our CTC, to the central office. And it's amazing what's going on in Frederick County. As the ears, you've got to hear what's going on out there. You have to listen to the students, the parents, the teachers, and the staff. And then as a voice, we need to be a voice for our school system and our community, both locally, at the state level, and nationally to promote Frederick County Public Schools.
Thank you very much. And the final word on this original one will be from Ms. Jarman.
So after having served on the Board for a little over a year now, I have to say that the biggest task of the Board is to balance policy and budget. And it's really a balancing act. And in order to balance those policies, you have to be familiar with the policies. And in order to balance the budget, you have to be familiar with the numbers. So it's really a balancing act up on that tightrope that requires a great deal of listening, a great deal of being there. One of the things that I have learned in the last year was that this position has taken much more of my time and energy than I ever dreamed, but it has been some of the most rewarding time that I have spent in my life advocating for education because I firmly believe that public education is a public good. And without a good public education, we lose the risk of not having a good society. So again, we balance.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to offer a rebuttal to the first question? All right, I do not see anybody indicating they wish to do that, so we'll move on to the second question. We all know that there's been an increasing focus on STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math in recent years, appropriately so, I would say. However, what role does music, art, world languages, and the humanities have in a well-balanced curriculum? And the first person to answer this question is Dean Rose.
Thanks again, Gary. I believe we gave a focus on STEM, mathematics, engineering. We saw a need at those positions, but at some point, we left behind the humanities, art, music, theater. And what we've discovered is that we found that kids who excelled in art and music were more successful in college. The reason being is art and music demand the same type of critical thinking that is required in math. And we've also found that the success in Algebra I and Algebra II shows success in college. So I think that was a... We looked at the end game, that we thought we needed to fill these positions. And we didn't realize that what art, theater, music, the humanities, history, all lead us to being lifelong learners and better employees at whatever position that we might find, especially when we find out that the majority of kids who go into college, better than half, change their major anyway. So we need to prepare kids to do whatever they need to do in life.
All right, thank you. Andrea Artman.
Yeah, so as an engineer, obviously STEM is near and dear to my heart. But I was also an athlete and a musician growing up. And I think those things helped me to gain the expertise and the ability to think differently, to think outside of the box, and to take problems from different perspectives and provide different types of ways of solving them. So I am in full support of having a well-rounded education, especially in early education input in secondary school because nobody knows what they're going to be when they graduate high school. And that's the benefit of being able to explore at that time of your life and learn what you do and what you do well, but also learn about passions and how they can impact you and how they can help you to get through the hard times, even if you do choose a STEM career. So yeah, I think it's very important to balance STEM, as well as the humanities in every aspect of your life.
Thank you very much. Sue Johnson.
That's a great question. And again, like Andrea, I also have an engineering and computer science background. And I'm pleased to say I was part of the grant-writing team that secured a grant for over $600,000 for underrepresented students pursuing STEM education at FCC. And that first cohort will start in the fall. So I'm a firm believer in STEM. But I'm also on record as one of my three wishlist projects. And I know the Board needs to work collaboratively. But if I had my own way, I would wave a magic wand, and I would have a school for the arts in downtown Frederick. And we have that up in Hagerstown, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. And they're not known for their arts. Frederick is known for their arts. And I know we have programs out there, but in my ideal world, we would have a vibrant charter school for the arts in downtown Frederick. That's coming from somebody who's got a STEM background. So I support the arts strongly. And I'm not artistic.
Lois Jarman.
So I would like to change the discussion from STEM to STEAM. I don't believe that an education works without the A for the arts. The arts teach students to be collaborative, to be innovative, to be problem solvers. I spoke a few years ago with an engineer who told me, he said, "You know, Lois, engineers just aren't creative." We need to give that to all of our students. And we do that by incorporating the arts in our programs. Think about marching band. Boy, there's some great collaboration, cooperation, creative thinking, problem-solving in a marching band halftime routine. Let's talk about the high school theater production. When your co-actor doesn't come on stage on time, gee, now I've got a problem solved. What do I do? The arts teach our children to love life. They give them rich lives. And we lack in giving them education without the arts.
Thank you. Ray Gallagher.
Thank you. So the phrase that really stuck with me in your question was the "well-balanced curriculum." And I think that, you know, several of the candidates have already hit on the true value that arts education, music, theater, incorporating dance, all of these areas really bring to our students to have a depth and breadth of experiences that allows them to tap into human connection, creativity, developing motor skills, language skills, decision-making. All of these are really critical components to students' development throughout their education. And so I think these are really critical components in the curriculum to continue building those social, emotional skills that, for our students, are a really important link to higher education and future job opportunities.
Thank you. Jason Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I also am a STEM major. Actually, I have a degree in biology and chemistry, also with my master's in computer technology curriculum instruction. And so as someone who's worked in the field, I know for a fact that there is really, truly, there's always been STEAM. The union of science and technology with art has always been there. We have to just emphasize it. No one creates a textbook that you can see things without that merger of science and art. For instance, right now with COVID, we've all seen the visual graphic of the virus now with the protein coat. We're seeing art and science merge together. So you have that marriage of the two. Without the ability to communicate, you won't be able, you have the idea, you could solve COVID. But you can't have the art power to communicate that. No one will hear you. As an engineer myself, and actually a co-inventor of the Ebola suit for Hopkins, I had to use my art to tell my team what I was thinking to bring about the patent. So we worked together on the suit.
Hey, you need to finish up, Mr. Johnson.
When I had the idea, I used art to show them the solution. So the solution is STEAM altogether, science, engineering, math, art, together.
Thank you. And David Bass.
Well, I certainly don't think we need to decide between STEM or the humanities. We really, we need STEM. We need the humanities. We need arts and music and physical education. We really need all of this for a well-balanced education. And I think we need all of this to really tap into student interests. We need to find what will inspire each and every child in Frederick County. And the interests will really run the gamut. I also think that both the humanities and STEM can really teach critical thinking skills. And based on everything that I've... Yeah, everything I've seen in our world in the last few years, we really need to ensure that everyone graduating has great critical thinking skills. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone like to use one of their rebuttals on this question to add or respond to something that has been said? Okay. Sue Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to just emphasize again with the rest of the candidates are stating as well. And I teach a class in 3D modeling. So it's very heavy technical work. But when you're modeling, you have to have a good design brain. And our students draw and we emphasize storytelling and history and anthropology and mythology. And frequently talk about a gentleman called Sid Meyer from Paraxis, who's developed Civilization Games and he's been so successful because he's had this broad background combined with his.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. We're going to move on then to our third question. We're all living through interesting times and you all decided to run for office and interesting times. We don't know when it's going to end. When FCPS reopens sometime next school year, how should schools assess student mastery of last year's curriculum? And how do educators in the school system fill in academic, social, emotional gaps students will most likely be returning to school with? At the same time, they're trying to move them forward in their next year's curriculum. And this question goes first to Ms. Artman.
Gary, before we begin, would it be if you repeated the question one more?
It's a little longer. When FCPS reopens sometime next year, how should the school system assess students' mastery of this year, I guess, this year's curriculum? And how do we fill in academic and social, social emotional gaps from this time off while also trying to move students forward? And Ms. Artman, you have the first crack at this one.
So, I mean, that's something that our teachers have to do every year, COVID or not, crisis or not, right? So when their new students come in, there's always going to be a gap for some students and their social, emotional, educational. And this year is going to be a little bit different in that that gap can be even wider. But we need to equip our teachers to be able to do that assessment and be able to provide in-class opportunities for them to bring them up to, to speed. And that just brings up a bigger question of the opportunity gaps that are already widely spread throughout the community. And how we're gonna, how do we actually impact that as well? The crisis will go away, but unfortunately, the opportunity gap has been something we've been working on for years and have not really been able to close that. And so it's really a bigger question as to how we do that. Not only COVID-related, but throughout education as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. So I believe how we address, one thing teachers can do to address the, the gap we have with education and with the social emotional connection there is going to be projects in class. Now, when I say project in class, please put a grain of salt. We're still waiting to hear back from the State Board of Education how they're going to implement the Maryland Together Program with options on how we go to school. It could be half day, it could be week on, week off or 8A B day. But when they come together in class, if they're working in projects, you're going to have a sort of collaboration that could help heal some of those, some of those issues. And one thing that COVID has done is give us all a connection to deal with from there. So as soon as we'll have, be able to relate to one another in ways they couldn't before, they all know what this is. They all had this issue to deal with. So collaboration with projects will allow them to work together. You can teach through projects and assess and build collaboration when you do projects.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jarman.
So yes, going back to school in the fall is going to be met with many different types of situations. And we're still not clear what's going to happen. And so you're going to have students who are in all sorts of settings. And I would like us to take a step back from assessing mastery. I think that the first thing that we need to look at when schools return is some sort of social emotional learning plan. Learning cannot happen when social emotional learning needs are not met. So we have to meet those needs first. We were fortunate that the crisis occurred towards the end of the third semester or the third term, excuse me. So in terms of elementary and middle school, the academic year was about three quarters of the way through. I'll be concerned about our low-income students. And I think that we really need to take a good look at assessing the emotional needs of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
I think that anyone who's gone through any sort of crisis or crisis management training, you'll become familiar with the phases of a crisis. And as we move towards a recovery, there's a certain aspect of healing that needs to go on. I personally, I'm not going to be as concerned as others might be within terms, with terms of mastery of last year's skills or this year's, you know, the skills that they're in right now. I know from a personal anecdote, my son actually hates going to school right now. He hates the distance learning and there's tears almost, well, there's tears weekly. So I think we need to address the student and actually make sure that they want to be engaged back in school and make, make the environments more appealing for them. I think that's a critical issue in order for the students to then move forward in their learning. So there's, there's a bunch of steps involved and, and I don't want to underestimate the potential impact that'll carry on for all of next year in terms of our low economic students, not even be able to catch up next year if we go to these hybrid formats.
Thank you. And Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you. So Lois actually took some of the words right out of my mouth. I think that social emotional learning and social emotional health is absolutely going to be the most critical component of our return to school, whatever that may look like in the fall or, or whenever it actually is. We need to have a plan in place to work with students who have experienced trauma during this time and many of our students have. And then I think that for, as we're assessing what this plan will look like, we need to ensure that we have plenty of time for collaboration between teachers and across the school system as a whole, so that teachers who have a lot of expertise in how to address some of the, the gaps and potential issues that students might be facing as far as academics can come together and really brainstorm that together while meeting their social emotional needs.
Thank you. David Bass.
Yeah, this is really one of the most critical issues that we have faced in a long time. I, I think that the COVID, the COVID time away from school really exacerbates the summer slide that our lower income students experience every year. And I think that we're going to need to be creative and kind in our approaches. I think that it's going to take a lot of enrichment and a lot of additional learning opportunities to really ensure that, that every student has an opportunity to, to master the material from this year. The, the distance learning is very challenging across the board. I'm also very concerned about the, the emotional trauma. I think that this, this really should be seen, you know, as an adverse childhood experience. And we need to work together to address that.
Thank you. And Mr. Rose. You're muted.
But the last thing our students need is to be subjected to some type of high stakes testing. I heard a teacher tell a parent the other day when the parent was so upset, their child was freaking out. And the teacher said, you don't worry about that. I'm going to meet your child where they are. So I agree. The most important thing we need to do is to address the mental and social health of our children. The question is going to be with the funding, how are we going to do that? Well, I propose that we take a strong, strong partnership with our local organizations like the Mental Health Association, Hartley House, the Boys and Girls Club of Frederick County, the YMCA, I Believe in Me, the Police Activities League are all organizations that can come together and help us deal with this type of trauma that our kids have gone through. And that's what's going to help them propel academically.
Thank you. And would anyone like to offer a rebuttal? I see Ms. Jarman's hand first. Go ahead, Lois.
Thank you, David, for bringing up the ACs. I read an article this afternoon that said that COVID is a collective ace. We are all going through an adverse childhood experience. So it's really about the community. We need to look at the social emotional needs of all, our teachers, our staff, our students. We need to take it slow. A quote I read, relationships over everything, connection before contact, Maslow before Bloom.
And Ms. Gallagher, I saw your hand as well.
Something that I just wanted to add to was that in this virtual environment, we have also had a number of students who have actually really been able to thrive in this virtual environment because they might experience some anxiety or bullying or other issues within their school. And so this virtual environment has given them a platform to also thrive in a different way. And so I think we need to consider as a system too, how we meet sort of both of these needs and allow students to access resources in different ways as well moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Rose.
I just wanted to add one more factor about the reason we need to form these partnerships, particularly with our social and mental health partners, is that while we've been going through this distance learning and our children haven't had that social environment with their friends, when we go back to school this fall, we're still going to probably be under restrictions as far as social distancing. So we're still going to have to deal with those issues with our children as far as how they socially interact with each other. And I think that's why it's so important that we're able to form these partnerships with these outside organizations.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to speak to, I want to add more to what I was saying before. And about, about the power of teacher is so important. One thing I want to see in Frederick County go toward, my colleagues have been saying here that the need for connection. One thing I have a student currently who actually is dealing with the outbreak of COVID in their home. Their grandmother and their mother have both been affected. And so as an educator, I'm working with the students, go through this time together. One thing my students have shared with me is that the time we have clarity together in classroom has been a safe place for them. Right now at FCPS, we have a ad hoc drop-in system. I'd like to see, if I went to the board, to see a change in the system. We train our educators to have in-classroom virtually like we're doing now. Our kids don't have this. As the connection, social emotional connection.
I need to stop you there. Thank you.
This is, this is Mary. I need to jump in just for a moment. Just to say, candidates, if you could give the timer a moment to reset each time before you start speaking. So once, once the timer's been reset, you see it move, go ahead and start talking at that point. And for, for time's sake, because we do want to stay within format, we will be turning the mute button on for candidates that do go over their time. Okay? All right. Thanks.
It's probably my fault. I need to get to the.
It's okay, Gary. You've got a lot going on. We got it.
All right. Question number four. In order to attract and retain the best educators, how will you ensure that Frederick County's teacher salaries become competitive with the top-tier school systems in Maryland and not in the bottom tier where they sit presently? And also, if it's not just salaries, how else can the school system attract highly effective employees for, for any position? And this question goes first to Ms. Gallagher.
Waiting for the time to start. Okay. So yes, I, this is absolutely one of my top priorities as a board member. Teacher salaries and benefits are critical components to attracting and retaining high-quality educators, diverse educators, and educators who will stay with the system long-term. And so of course, the school budget is, the school system budget is a critical component of ensuring that we have teacher salaries and benefits that are competitive. And so I'm absolutely committed to ensuring that our staff system is in place and gets more competitive over time so that we can attract and retain teachers as well as ensuring that our benefits are competitive, as well as ensuring that our school climate and planning collaborative time is attractive to teachers within our system.
Thank you. Mr. Bass.
I was very disturbed to learn how many teachers we lose each year to other counties. And that despite our being a, one of the more wealthy counties in Maryland, that our teacher salaries don't reflect that. And so whether I'm elected or not, I will continue to advocate for more funding for FCPS through conversations with my neighbors, conversations with members of county council and our county executive. I think in many ways, FCPS has been short-changed. And, you know, we, I, I know that we face difficult budgets ahead. But, you know, the, the 28 million above maintenance of effort was, was actually really needed for us to ensure the best school system in the state of Maryland.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. The first thing I want to make sure, if I went to the board, is to make sure with these current times with COVID crisis, if we have, we have a budget crunch due to a lack of funding because of state level reductions. And should we keep our teachers employed? First, first thing. After that, I would definitely seek to make sure that I support that the Auburn's request for increase for students around $15,000 per student, which is great. And then to make sure it's done well, we keep our word. As an educator in Frederick County, I had to leave. I couldn't take care of my family with the current funds I had to educate for the county. One reason because we had our step, step plan in place, but we didn't follow it. So as a board member, I would advocate to make sure that we make it a priority and we follow our word with the step plan.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Ever since I had my first interview for the last vacancy for the appointment to the Board of Education, I've been harping on our lack of adequate salaries, particularly at the entry level for teachers. When you're ranking 18th and 19th out of 24 jurisdictions in the state of Maryland, that's a pretty sad state. And that's with and without cost of living. So I have countless friends who travel outside the county to teach. And we simply must have more competitive salaries, at least at the entry level. And programs where our teachers are given opportunities to buy a house in Frederick County. So I know other jurisdictions have programs where you get your down payment made by the county if you promise to stay teaching in the school system. Just really want to see us work for good ways to, even if we can't give as much of a base salary as we possibly can or what our teachers actually deserve, that we put programs in place that are not monetary to keep them wanting to work in, in Frederick County.
Thank you. Mr. Rose.
Is your issue. This is a perfect example of where our board is going to have to turn into an advocate board at the county and state level. We have got to advocate for our teachers. We are still paying for the issues that were brought forth by an administration that went through the financial collapse of 2008, 2009. And we went through six consecutive years of maintenance of effort levels to the school system. That cost us thousands of dollars to our teachers. We cannot rank 20th in starting pay. You cannot earn a $15,000 raise to go to Loudoun County or Montgomery County. Once you receive your master's degree, you're encouraged to leave our county. We have to stop that and we have to advocate for our teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Jarman.
Well, I would like to say that the current makeup of the board includes three teachers. So I know that we, we take our teachers at the, at the utmost of importance. And, and we want to attract the best for our students. And so I talked earlier about a balancing act. It really is a balancing act of working with state and local entities in order to get those budget dollars up. Our current county executive has been, has been wonderful in her desire to fund education. The county council has supported her in those efforts. And we were rolling along, doing really well until this virus hit. And so we, we have to make some difficult decisions, but boy, our teachers need to be at the top. And so I think that we are looking at measures.
That's time. And Ms. Artman.
This is a parent's dime that I'm familiar with. My husband is a nurse. And it's very similar in that his salary is based upon surrounding counties, but above us. So they're, you know, getting paid less than people in Montgomery County. And so it's, it's, it's a very interesting paradigm. And I think as a member of the board, I would work towards aligning our educator salary with the, the counties in Maryland that make similar wages in other areas and other industries. And it's not only about pay, as other people said, but it's, you know, what else can we offer? Professional development that's essential to retain effective employees, training should not only be limited to CEUs, but also include leadership training and other opportunities of interest to our staff. And then really just making sure that they're supported mentally and physically as well. And provide opportunities that they're interested in and so that they can mentor new train, new people that are coming up or students and things of
Right, that's time. Would anyone like to provide a rebuttal or add to their answer? I saw Mr. Bass's hand go up first.
Just wait, okay. The one thing we haven't spoken much about is the blueprint for Maryland's future, the Kerwin Commission. You know, currently, the legislation was vetoed by Governor Hogan. And I do think that the blueprint provides the way to ensure educational equity for our students and to ensure excellent competitive professional salaries for our teachers. And I, I hope to work to get that passed.
Mr. Dean, I saw your hand.
Thank you very much. But Dean's good.
Dean, son.
I just, this issue is so important. I just wanted to, to add that the pool of teachers is getting smaller and smaller every year, unfortunately. Is that fewer and fewer people are going into education. So it's imperative that we get our salaries up to one, retain the talent that we have and attract talent that we need, particularly diverse talent that we need to get in Frederick County.
Thank you. Ms. Jarman?
I'm going to talk really fast. So what COVID, I think, has done for us is made us realize how invaluable our teachers are. We're looking at apprenticeship of programs. I'm encouraged that educators now are a desirable profession. So we have to grow that profession. We're going to offer more collaborative time for our teachers and take less of those non-teaching duties away so that they can be the professionals that they were trained to be.
Thank you. I see any other hands up? Yes, Ms. Artman?
I think this is where my experience in streamlining processes to cut out fat associated with costs is going to be really important as well. If we can reduce costs in other areas, it might open up the budget so we can use that money in order to pay our, our teachers more salary. That is what I have spent my career doing is ensure that we have streamlined resources and processes so we can get money to where it needs to be.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. One of the most important jobs of the Board of Education is approving the capital budget, including the capital improvement priorities for the school system. How should FCPS adequately plan for building new schools while also funding renovations and upgrades for our existing schools? And the first person to answer this question is Lois Jarman.
So in the Maryland blueprint, there was a lot of, a lot of dollars that were going to be focused towards capital improvement. One of the things that we, we're looking at in FCPS right now is we have a number of aging buildings that are very, very expensive to to restore, to get them renovated in good condition for students. And we have to work really closely with the county and with the state in terms of procuring funds for our, our new school buildings. And we also have to really work closely with the development plan in Frederick County so that we know where growth is going to be down the road in order to better plan. And I just think that it's a collaborative effort and it requires people from the state, the county and the schools to be able to develop a plan that we can hopefully meet the need.
Thank you. Sue Johnson?
Great. I think that it is important to have a certain level of quality of school. However, having said that, I, I'd been educated in environments that were freaky buildings that leaked. And it was really the, the quality of what went on inside the walls, which is what mattered the most. So I probably am not going to be the biggest fan of putting the latest and greatest buildings out there. I just want to make sure all of our students have a safe environment to learn and, and that we have the schools located in the right places. So that when we're building a school, we won't find ourselves in a situation like we have up at St. Villasville where there's not really a, a density of population that makes the school, you know, I don't want to say profitable, but like, you know, viable for the community. So there is a lot of coordination that would need to happen and there's lots of groups that are involved with any school construction process. So we just need to keep working those, working those and making sure we're making good decisions down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Here, I am going to say, I think one of the most important things in capital improvements is equity. I think we have to make sure that all of our students are receiving the best facilities that are possibly available to them. It shouldn't be a fact where Brunswick receives a certain facility and Urbana or Oakdale has another higher-end facility possibly. A lot of times that might be perception, but often perception is reality. So we have to take care of that. One other side where we have to, we have to commit dollars is to our CTC program. I had the opportunity to spend an afternoon at CTC. We have 825 students there, better than half. Although already ready often for careers, they go on to college. It's a fantastic model for education and we need to spend money there.
Thank you very much. Ms. Artman?
Yeah, I think it's really important that all students have access to this, the same resources as Dean was saying. And for buildings and I, you know, I also agree with Sue in that it's not necessarily the building that, that makes the difference. It's the teachers, it's the, the students, it's the community that's built in those buildings. Yes, it would be nice if we all were looking outside beautiful windows and, and learning in those environments, but that's not always feasible. So really what's important is equity of resources, computers, great teachers, and, and those aspects of learning are more important to me than their buildings. That being said, I do believe that a, a good roof is important. And so we need to really prioritize, you know, making sure that the buildings are functional and, and ensuring that the money is allocated to where the people are and that those estimates are good.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
Hi, yes. So I'll disagree on some points. I want to say with the maintenance of finances with the budget right now, we have to be mindful of COVID. And so what, you know, what happens with the state level, we may never see our buildings as we did before. Again, one, one idea to plan is that, that high school stays home and most of it goes to high schools. That being said, I would think first we would look at doing things that keep our kids working now. Make sure that they have good, strong connections. Make sure they have working laptops and tablets. And then if possible, making sure that they, they have classrooms that encourage them. Being a child from a low income initially, I can tell you that when your school system invests in you, it helps you believe in yourself. So I think our kids should see things, I've seen classrooms where we have cabinets falling off the wall. We should fix that as much as possible. But first things first, understand what times we're in and make sure all our kids are connected and have laptops and wifi. Then there, go from there.
Thank you. And Mr. Bass?
Sure. I, I have two main points to make on this. I think the first is we really should be able to use similar blueprints for similar schools. I, I don't think there is need to spend funds or significant time making a unique blueprint for each school. And, and so I'm hopeful there would be some money savings that way. I also think if there's going to be delays in construction programs, these need to be communicated quickly and appropriately with, with the community. I think that sometimes when schools are projected to open and then don't open for another year or longer, you know, people get very frustrated. And so we need to make sure that our communication around pace of construction is, is, is accurate.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you. So I think as I'm considering capital improvement plans and school construction, school upgrades, it definitely requires that collaboration between FCPS and the County Planning Commission and different municipalities to consider residential growth and ensuring that we're really going to, to meet the needs where they are and where they're projected to be. And we can't simply rely on impact fees and other fees for all of our facility upgrades and new construction. And so this again goes back to advocating for budget and appropriate budgets for upgrades when we need them and new school construction as we need them. And we really need to ensure, again, at the equity, at the core of equity is ensuring that our students and our educators have access to fully functioning buildings and technology with adequate space.
Thank you. And would anyone like to provide a rebuttal or more information? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just wanted to add on to it that I also believe that one way you can cut costs is to keep advocating for multiple bids. And recently, the board in the last meeting had, I think, 12 bids for a project. So I think having multiple bids is going to help drive down costs as well. Also, I'd like to see a program where we have a CTC countywide. We start one, one project at a time, but as funds allow and as time allows, I look good to see CTC go beyond one building but across the county.
Thank you. Ms. Jarman?
So I wanted to jump on the equity word as well because if our facilities are not equitable, that in increases challenges for teachers as well as students in terms of technology. Sporting facilities, if they are not equitable, then our students lose out. Portables, we have a number of schools with portables that present safety issues. And I wanted to add that FCPS has fantastic custodial staff who keep our buildings looking top up.
Thank you. I saw Ms. Johnson, you had your hand up, I think?
Yeah, I did. And that was just to reemphasize too about capital improvement. I, I'd be willing to sacrifice some of that money as long as nobody's drinking brown water like they've been doing at Brunswick. That we take some of that money and actually build a flexible infrastructure so that we can put together systems where students would have already been registering online for kindergarten. That we already would have had like a single login system for all the work that we do in distance learning, a single platform for distance learning. If you put a good infrastructure in place, it gives you the ability to be flexible. And I think we need that more than ever.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Artman, I see you. Go ahead.
Just gotta make it really big. I just wanted to emphasize when the new developments are going up, there's been a lot of underestimation of the amount of kids that are coming into those communities. And so it's really made the, the numbers really low. And then when, since we're only funding at the beginning of a school year, it doesn't allow us to add in the additional students that weren't accounted for at the beginning of, of this season.
Thank you. All right, that is, those are five questions. So I'm going to ask Mary Lee if, if we have time for any more or do we go to final comments?
Yes, we can take another question. Andrea, I sent you a message. Did we miss the rebuttal that you wanted to do?
I think maybe, but it's okay because I
Okay. Someone sent me a message and I sent you a message to ask, but if you really wanted to do that, we'll certainly give you time to do that since you had your hand up.
I'll wait. Thank you very much.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary. Thank you.
Okay. I have another budget question. This one's about the operating budget. That is such a big part of being on the board as you determine and finalize the budget. FCPS has an operating budget of about $500 million. What are your funding priorities and how should the system plan for possible budget shortfalls if there is a prolonged recession as a result of our current crisis? And this question goes first to Sue Johnson.
Funding priorities for me right now, again, I think the whole playing field has changed. We should fully expect that the state is going to exercise the Burfa, the Budget Reduction Finance Act, and that we should be well poised to that. Now, I can tell you at FCC, we're planning for one, expanded enrollment, case students aren't going to go to the four-year schools, and two, for furlough days so that we don't have to lay off employees. So we're trying to cover both ends of the spectrum and I would prioritize any funding to go toward things that would help keep us resilient to what's happening. Because I would anticipate the worst and hope for the best. So you'd probably be amazed at what I would cut out or what I wouldn't fund to make sure that we have teachers that still can stay in system and teach and that we have adequate resources for students to be able to learn. We're all about trying to provide education for our students and our operating budget should be focused on that mission right now in this end up.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, for operating budget, I will focus on three, three key, key areas. Number one being safety that regards our students. If we go to any model, we go into the school building, we'll have to sanitize. And so we have to make sure we have funds to make sure we keep our schools clean and safe for our students and our staff. And that also goes into health and wellness for our safety, for our mental health. Technology, because no matter what, we're using technology a lot. So I want to make sure we have working devices that are well-funded, well wifi. Susan Roarair should have stronger wifi signals so they're not suffering data loss. And also staff salary. It's important that we keep our educators and they don't look for the jobs on this time. And they don't, you know, they, they are encouraged to stay with us. As you guys provide wonderful training, we have great teachers. We need to keep the teachers motivated and financed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ray Gallagher?
Thank you. So my budget priorities now and even in the time of a crisis are in our teacher salaries and benefits. We need to be able to retain our teachers and attract new teachers. And so I would be opposed to any cuts in these areas. And of course, we want to make sure that we do not need to lose any of our educators during this time of COVID. I would also advocate for adequate resources for all of our student populations from special education to English language learners to ensuring appropriate mental health supports, particularly in this time to make sure that all of our students can remain connected. And then technology is going to continue to be a top priority, I think, for the school district. And one of my budget priorities as well to ensure that all students can access resources during this time.
Thank you very much. David Bass?
Yeah. Two of my budget priorities. First, special education. When FCPS had to go from 28 million above maintenance of effort to 7 million above maintenance of effort, five special education positions were cut in the projected budget. And that concerns me deeply. I think we can do better as a system with special education. And some of that is certainly having enough special education teachers. I also want to invest in mental health services for students. Think we, you know, we spoke earlier, I think all, every candidate spoke earlier about how traumatic this time of COVID is. And we really need to ensure that our mental health services for students are, are excellent. This was an issue before COVID and it is certainly going to be an issue post-COVID.
Thank you. Ms. Artman?
I think the other candidates have, have covered it pretty well as far as funding priorities. I do believe that teacher retention and support is important, not only support in what they're teaching our students, but also mental and physical health. We focus a lot on how this is impacting the students, but it is also having an impact on our, on our teachers as well. And I think it's important that we're showing them support as, as well. as well. And I think it's important that we're showing them support as well from a mental and physical health standpoint during this time. Our students, obviously, it's number one priority for them to learn and to engage and be able to engage appropriately and appropriately for their age level. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. It's been really difficult for us to engage with our teachers just through chat boxes. They can't even really do the typing, so it's very difficult for that interaction. And so I think we need to see some way to help the elementary students be able to progress a little better if we're going to do at-home school teaching.
Thank you. Dean Rose?
Thank you, Gary. It's actually a $620 million budget. And unfortunately, Leslie Pellegrino at last week's meeting had the unenviable task of presenting the program of cutting $15 million from the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. And some of the things they had to cut were the expansion of the RISE program, which is a special education program for middle schoolers. So we've got to find a way to provide services through partnerships with our local organizations. They had to cut behavioral specialists and school psychologists. So again, we have to find a way to provide the mental health and social services to our children outside of the budget with our local partnerships. And then on top of that, we have to continue to serve the kids who need us most, who are falling behind with the achievement gap due to the inequity in education. And we can again do that with the partnerships that we have within our community.
Thank you. And Lois Jarman?
So my priority is really the mental health of our staff and of our students. And so I think that that is a budget priority, especially in COVID time. We have seen some problems with distance learning in terms of tracing students. We have students in the county who are homeless. So yes, as Dean said, partnerships, we've had some great work with SHIP and other organizations who are helping us meet the needs of our homeless students. By engaging in those partnerships, we can save some money. We've had some issues with many of our special education students in distance learning, and we're looking ways to fix that and hope that we can get some funding from the CARES Act to assist us with the technology. But we got the word that we had to cut, and it's really a difficult task.
Thank you. Would anyone like to offer a rebuttal or add more to their comments? Ms. Artman?
I lost my train. Oh, they're just, okay. So I just also, we talk about partnerships, but also the business community hasn't really been brought up a lot in this discussion. And I think in a lot of areas, the business community could be tagged on as a partner in education as well. We do it a little bit in links and with some of the internships and things. But I think really during this time, it's a good time to really tap into our business community that's really thriving here. And as a small business owner, I think I'm poised to do that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add anything on this topic? All right.
Looks like Sue.
Mary Lee, did you have something to say?
It looks like.
I was just waiting for the clock.
He wants to do a rebuttal.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just waiting for the clock to start.
Okay, my bad.
I just, I can't emphasize enough the unknown that we're going to be facing. And I think just bracing ourselves for the unknowns, I honestly think that we're going to see a real power spread in our achievement gap right now and the more we go with distance learning. And it's, we need to be ready to serve our students that don't get the best of services right now. And we'll have to make resources away from students who do have existing resources and put them toward that. I think, like, we can't underestimate the effort it's going to take to serve our underserved students.
Thank you.
Okay, so candidates, we're going to do one last question. Just so you know, Lois, Andrea, and Sue, all three of you have used your rebuttals, so you will not be able to rebut this question. So Gary, take the floor with the last question. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mary Lee. The last question, it was interesting, it was just brought up, is about the achievement gap as well as disparities in suspension rates for special education, minority students, and low SES students. How much more does Frederick County Public Schools need to do and what can they do to help shrink the gaps in achievement, but also lessen the disparities in the way even that children are disciplined in our school system? And this question goes first to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. It's a question that's been unfortunately on the hearts of educators for some time now. Students who are usually predisposed to being suspended, usually African-American, usually low income, use the education, we have to do more to change our lens. Students who don't always, you know, keep their mouths shut, you know, are not the worst kid in class. Kids who have poor times being able to cope are not the worst kid ever. So we have to change how we respond to our students and provide them coping mechanisms from an early age. And then we have to, we are ourselves looking internally at how we reciprocate and how we respond to our children. With the focus on building relationships, with the focus on being restorative in our practices. We have to make sure that we are teaching our children wherever they are and wherever they come from. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Rose.
It's kind of fitting that we would address these issues today because yesterday was the 66th anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education. And I think we can reflect on how far we've come and yet how far we have to go. And the achievement gap is a primary issue that we've been dealing with years. And I think I have a unique perspective in my work with the Boys and Girls Club of Frederick County in that we're able to provide services through programs that help these kids elevate themselves academically and be prepared for the rigors of education, but also become career-ready. On the other question regarding discipline, restorative practices work, but we need the proper training. Often, the pendulum slings too far one way or the other. And if we don't properly, with these kids who are going through the challenges they are, which incorporate preventative, supportive, and corrective actions, if we don't do it correctly, our teachers don't feel supported.
Thank you. And next is Lois Jarman.
So I think that we need to, in order to change the achievement gap in academics and reduce the gap in suspensions, is that we have to look at relationships. And that's at the heart of social and emotional learning. We also need to look at the way we're teaching and teach the way the brain learns. We learn through experiences. John Dewey, the great philosopher of education, says, "Humans learn through experiences." We need to move to an experiential learning setting. We need to teach the way the brain learns. The brain learns when it is actively engaged. And so restorative practices have been mentioned. We're looking with MADE, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, we're looking at conscious discipline and how conscious discipline training can teach the community, teachers, and students about effective, positive disciplinary measures.
Thank you. David Bass?
Yeah. Just going to wait for the time. So I think the very first Board of Ed meeting that I attended, the Racial Equity Committee was being discussed. And it really is part of what made me interested in running for the Board of Ed. I felt like I would be potentially joining a group of community leaders who really have the right priorities and get it. And so I both applaud the board for creating the Racial Equity Committee and recognize we really have a long way to go. I, you know, we discuss in this question, the achievement gap, and I really want to raise the opportunity gap, that very often, lower-income students, Black and Latino students do not have the same opportunities. And I want to highlight that. I also, in this role, would want to raise the trust level across different communities in FCPS.
Thank you. Give the timer a second here. Andrea Artman?
Yeah, so I think it's really important to look at unconscious bias and how that impacts how we treat students and how each of them are individuals, and we need to treat them as such. I think it's important to focus, as David said, looking at the opportunity gaps and focusing less on achievement gap. And if we can remove the opportunity gaps, we can help to close that achievement gap over time. I think this happens through community building and parent education as well as student education. We have to give the community the information they need to understand the biases that are in our community and in the country. And so I think we need to utilize many, many resources that we currently leave untapped in order to provide training, not only to our students, but also to our community and how we can overcome this together as Frederick.
Thank you. Ray Gallagher?
Thank you. So I think there are several parts to this question. Since Maryland School Funding Formula was last updated, the percentage of students who are living in poverty in the state of Maryland has doubled. The Maryland blueprint would have addressed some of these issues. But we have students in Frederick County who are facing a number of challenges that may interfere with their academic performance in the classroom from histories of trauma, food insecurity, mental health. And so we don't have the funding capacity to address all of these issues necessarily. And so that's where the community partnerships and building increased supports within the school comes in. But in addition to that, I think the Racial Equity Committee has been mentioned. We definitely need to utilize the expertise of the Racial Equity Committee to help us to dig into the data around disparate suspension rates.
Thank you. And Ms. Johnson?
Thanks. And I again agree with all the other candidates here, and in particular, David, your comments on the opportunity gap. I was looking at the data, and I can't remember which group published it, but it was actually very depressing to see the disparity in discipline and punishment rates in Frederick County across our racial lines. And it made me really sad. And I was wondering how, how come that hasn't been addressed earlier? So all I can say is that now that I know that this is an issue, I would be on it as a major agenda item because it's, you have to have things put into place so that we're working in a collaborative manner. So as Dean said, working with the community partners and you, Andrea. I mean, I think we could talk a lot, but we definitely need some action in this area. It's one of the reasons why I'm running.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add or rebut on this question? Dean Rose?
This one here, Gary. So I would like to talk about a big piece of good news. The good news is, is that we had an amazing program piloted at Monocacy Elementary School. It's called the PATH Program. It's a social and emotional learning program, and it did amazing things on the social level. It cut down on disciplinary problems, but more importantly, their academic achievement leapt forward with this program. So I'm excited that we're going to be expanding that program throughout FCPS, and that would be one of my.
Thank you. Jason Johnson?
Thank you. I want to speak to, I'll wait for time, speak to the concern that some make you think that poverty means students are in the achievement gap. But what you might find is students who are impoverished have a motivation bonus. And so we need to make sure our schools are safe places for them. We need to make sure that we have real connections for them and that we keep them exposed to places and to others who are like them who have succeeded and achieved. I wanted to help me out as a young student from, was spoken in my background, is exposure. So I want to provide us with exposure.
Thank you. Somebody else have their hand up? Yes, Ms. Gallagher?
So definitely, in addition to some of the things that have been mentioned, I think that increasing the diversity and cultural competence of teachers and educators, support staff throughout the system, will also have a positive impact as students can see themselves reflected as well in the diversity of the system and the teachers in the classroom who can relate to them in different ways will be an important step for us to consider as well.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see a hand up. Before, this will be, I'm going to now have you guys give your closing statements, and then Mary Lee will take it. So this is my opportunity to number one, say thank all, thank all of you for stepping up and running for this position. That's a hard thing to do. And more importantly, I just really want to thank you for your thoughtful answers tonight. It was great to have this conversation. So we're going to do our closing statements. There are two minutes each. We're going to do these in reverse alphabetical order. And so we'll have Dean Rose go first. Dean?
Thank you, Gary. I'd like to thank the Women's Democratic League and a special thank you to everyone who attended tonight. I also want to recognize my fellow candidates for stepping up to the plate and running. It's an enormous commitment and one that just got a lot bigger. A year and a half ago, when I decided to run for the Board of Education, I thought of a famous quote by Sir Winston Churchill. "To each there comes in their lifetime a special moment when they are figuratively tapped on the shoulder and offered the chance to do a very special thing, unique to them and fitted to their talents. What a tragedy if that moment finds them unprepared and unqualified for that which could have been their finest hour. I believe I'm uniquely qualified for this role, and I pledge I'll always be prepared." Prior to the pandemic, I said this was the most critical time for education in the history of our state. Now I think that's even more so. This position is going to require commitment, leadership, teamwork, in order to overcome all of the challenges that we are facing. Our school board will be tasked with making decisions that will have far-reaching impacts, not just on our school system, but on our community for years to come. By working with students, teachers, staff, parents, and fellow board members, I look forward to making Frederick County Public Schools the best they can be. A Greek philosopher once said, "A society grows great when old men and women plant trees whose shade they know they will never enjoy." I hope you'll join me in planting those trees and honor me with your vote.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Sue Johnson. Sue, as soon as we have the timer ready, you can go. Oh, she's still muted. Okay, I think you're unmuted now.
Okay, I thought I clicked on mute. There we go. And I just again want to thank the Women's Democratic League and everybody putting on the event tonight. I think it's been a wonderful demonstration of how you can use technology to continue doing your business. I can't say enough about the quality of the caliber of the candidates that are running in this cycle. And my gratitude goes out also to everybody else who's considering running for this very important position. I think for the next few years, we're going to be facing very difficult challenges. And it's incumbent upon who is ever on the school board to do right by our students and do right by our community. And the skill sets that we're going to require have been ones that we potentially have never asked for before, making very difficult decisions. And as someone who literally, like, within the last two weeks, was looking at a life or death situation on a water rescue and which victim to rescue first, you have to be prepared to make the right decision where potentially someone's life could be at risk. And I think having the background that I do in crisis management, in the practical expertise of emergency management and public health and welfare, along with my 23 years of teaching in a classroom, I know what it's like to teach. I know what it's like. I know what it's like to not have a good salary. I know what it's like to have students who are struggling. And I think that overall, I would be a very attractive candidate for the masses in this very important race. And I also am prepared and very happy to say that I've had the opportunity to have a law passed, and I've never done that before. And I went down to Annapolis, and I had a bill sponsored, and it was through both Democratic and Republican support that that bill was passed. In fact, it was a Republican who ushered it through the very last stages of its process so that it went to the governor's desk and now will become law, and it will help protect some of the most vulnerable members of our community. So I look forward to learning more about that, and I would be honored to have your vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, your final comments.
Thank you. I want to thank the Women's Democratic League for hosting tonight. It was an excellent event. Thank you so much. I want to thank my colleagues for joining us with tonight for discussion and for those who attended. I hope this time provided some valuable insight to where my views are as a candidate and what I can provide in Frederick County. My purpose in life is to educate and inspire. I've done this over 15 years, educating both the classrooms here in Maryland and at the state and local level. I'm running to ensure that Frederick County going forward excels in inspiring its learners. I want to meet the challenges and standards of today, but also those challenges posed by the world. As member of the Board of Education, I will speak to the needs of our community. I will seek to initiate programs and support programs that puts our students in positions of state and national leadership. I will support educators in teaching students how to problem solve in order to foster gifts in a way that prepares them for success in a world with ever-increasing demands. I love students. I love building champions. I love supporting educators in their being their best self. As a Board of Education member, you will see me passionately support you in all endeavors in Frederick County. You'll see me in the streets, at your events. You'll hear, you'll have my ear. And as a matter of fact, if you want to get ahold of me tonight, you can reach me at mrj, m-r-j, schoolstuff@gmail.com. Look forward to hearing from you and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Lois Jarman. And as soon as she's ready, Lois, there you go.
So in 1998, I entered the classroom as a long-term substitute and fell in love with the classroom, fell in love with teaching, fell in love with my students. And I remained in that classroom until the spring of 2016, when I realized that I could do more for my students by working outside of the classroom than I could inside the classroom. So I made the decision in 2016 to run for a seat on the Board of Education. Times were different then, and I made it from the primary to the general, but decided that it was better to endorse three candidates that I knew would be excellent for the Board of Education, and I decided to withdraw. But that didn't change my desire to serve the students and the teachers of Frederick County in public education. So I continued to work. I ran for state delegate in 2018, and I was fortunate enough in 2019 to be appointed by Jan Gardner to the Board of Education. I have served on the Board since January of 2019. I have learned a tremendous amount. I thought I knew a great deal about education, but I learned a great deal of education. And I really would like to continue to serve those in Frederick County and FCPS. I believe public education is a public good, and we need to give of ourselves to our public education system. I was a public education, a public school graduate. My children graduated from Frederick County Public Schools. I was a lifelong learner, earning my doctorate at the age of 51, and I'm still learning. I want to thank you for being here this evening, for learning. Casting your vote is extremely important, and I hope that I will be one of your choices when you cast that vote for Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Ray Gallagher. And go ahead, Ray.
Thank you. And thanks again for hosting this event for all of the candidates tonight. Throughout most of this evening, I think that you've heard that there are seven candidates that are pretty like-minded in our approach and support to public education. And honestly, I would be proud to serve alongside any one of these candidates. And I would be grateful, as a parent, to that as you check off the names from the ballot box this year, in my estimation, there really is no bad choice for Board of Education. I would ask that you consider electing me to remain on the Board this year because of my ability to create collaborative spaces, to listen for understanding, and not just to respond, and for my deliberate, careful approaches to decision-making. Being on the Board of Education, similarly to other elected positions, is not just about coming on to push one's own beliefs, but really representing our constituents in the best possible way. And as a Board, we need to work together to ensure that we have an adequately resourced, efficient, and effective public education system for our students. Our board members have an impact on educational policy, practice, systems, management, and all of these I have experience in with my nonprofit background. Being on the Board requires very tough decisions, and that often means being able to respond positively in times of conflict and challenge, and being able to listen without taking things personally. It requires action in the midst of uncertainty, teamwork, and an ability to remain focused on goals and outcomes without becoming too bogged down in the details. I hope that tonight you've heard from me something that resonates and that you'll select my name as you're checking off your mail-in ballot this year. Thank you.
Thank you. David Bass.
I appreciate your taking the time to listen to our forum this evening. Once again, my name is David Bass, and I ask for your vote in your mail-in ballot this month. It's my hope that my own life experiences will be of benefit to our Frederick County Public Schools. Issues of special education are personal for me. My brother's on the autism spectrum, and I've spent much of my career working with people with disabilities. I understand the need to tap into the potential, the abilities, the exceptionalities that our students with special needs bring to the table. We must do better as a school system in serving kids with disabilities. We also must continue the work of racial equity. We must ensure that students of color have equal access to advanced classes, that students of color not be disproportionately suspended, and that we improve our recruitment efforts of teachers of color. We know that achievement and opportunity gaps also exist for low-income students of every race, and I look to work across our county to address these issues. I also want to explore how we can work with the Maryland School for the Deaf to bring more opportunities for FCPS students to learn American Sign Language. And I look forward to being an extremely accessible Board member, holding office hours in the short term on Zoom and other online platforms, and once it becomes safe again in schools, libraries, and coffee shops throughout our community. I ask then for your vote for David Bass on your mail-in ballot before June 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrea Artman.
Thank you for hosting. It's been an honor to sit here with you all today, especially knowing that a lot of our opportunities to talk to the voters were canceled throughout the election. So it's been great to be able to sit here and have this discussion with all of you. Every child deserves the best we can give them. And for me, I believe the best begins with a lifetime love of learning. If we can create a thirst for learning in our children, I believe they are destined for greatness. However, in order to do that, we need to provide them with the best education possible from the earliest stages in their lives, not through constantly testing them to ensure they are learning enough or the right things, but by setting them down the path that will enhance the rest of their lives. That's why my platform is to focus on the whole child, diversity and inclusion, educator and staff retention, building community, and closing the achievement gap. It is my firm belief that educators and school administrators have the most difficult job in our society, and that they do it with grace and compassion. Teachers bring out the dreamer, the inventor, the writer, and all of us. They need our support, and we need to ensure they are getting compensated for the work that they do in our families, communities, and societies. I believe our teachers and administrators not only deserve a professional wage, but also deserve career growth opportunities, career ladders, recognition for the work they do. Today, there's a disparity in education, funding, and overall care that we put into our youth. It does not and should not have to be this way. Together, we can close the gap. We can make a difference in the lives of children. We can ensure children feel safe, loved, and accomplished. Join me in this endeavor. Together, we can make a difference. I'm Andrea Artman. Thank you.
Thank you so much, candidates. Truly appreciate your participation this evening. Gary, I want to thank you again for serving as moderator. You did a great job. I also want to thank Laura and Andrew Westdorff, who has been manning the timer. Thank you all so much. We truly appreciate that. I just want to take a moment here just to remind everyone, as if you don't know, the primary election is on Tuesday, June 2nd. It is primarily mail-in. However, there are three drop-off locations in Frederick County. They are the Frederick County Board of Elections Office, the William Tally Rec Center, and the Urbana Regional Library. You can drop your ballots off there anytime between May 21st and 8:00 PM on Tuesday, June 2nd. On June 2nd, there is limited in-person voting, and that is available at the William Tally Rec Center at 121 North Bent Street in Frederick, or the Urbana Regional Library, 9020 Amalung Street in Frederick. So again, it's just those two sites that have the in-person voting on Tuesday, June 2nd. If you have any questions about what I've just said, you can read that information on the Frederick County Board of Elections website. Again, we do appreciate everyone participating tonight, those that have joined, the candidates, the moderator, the sign interpreters, Alyssa Allison, thank you so much. Assuming that there are no issues, we will get this video uploaded to YouTube within the next two business days. Once we do that, we will put the link on the website of the Women's Democratic League homepage, and it will also be on the Women's Democratic League Facebook page, as well as the Democratic Central Committee Facebook page, United Democrats, and other clubs here in Frederick County. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful evening. This forum has now come to a close. Bye.